Sorry, Sherri.
Let's go ahead and get started.
Okay. All right, if you want to justify the document you've given, it kind of starts out, the first two sections are the S and M, maintenance contracts, this first one is software contracts. The VMware annual maintenance, this is kind of a bit of an unknown, we talked about it during our technology board meeting as well. VMware is our virtualization vendor, basically. They were purchased by a company called Broadcom, which is a massive company, and they traditionally raise prices after they buy a company, which as most companies do, but we haven't been able to get a definitive answer yet from our vendors as to what that's going to look like. Our vendor is recommending a thirty percent bump, which is what we've done, just to be safe, obviously, if we don't end up spending it, we won't use it, but we obviously have to have this to function, so we bumped that from eighteen thousand to twenty-three five.
Just a question I'd curious, is there somebody else that does the same kind of stuff in the future you could look at?
We are definitely looking at some other options. It is a significant change to move to somebody else. Yes, there are some other vendors out there, but there's a lot of variables, and it's not something, obviously, we're going to be able to make quickly.
I can give you some context from my personal job side. It's a massive shift happening that's disrupting the entire IT landscape. I mean, I'm seeing it in my personal role on a daily basis. We had a lengthy discussion about it. It is a massive disruption that, one, most people didn't see coming, but the change is pretty significant. So it's, what I'm grappling with, and I think we talked about, is this thirty percent increase? Like, yes, no, maybe, you don't know, so it's a no. But switching to someone else is, I would recommend it right now.
That's good information, I had no idea.
Time clock plus, this was an increase requested by the commissioners. It wasn't a change in anything necessarily, it was just a, we were really under budget, basically, for twenty-four, and so they requested probably fifteen to nineteen to cover what we have now, the rules wise. Adobe, this is, we had this in several offices, the prosecutor's office and the sheriff and the highway both requested additional licenses. The other thing we're running into is Adobe changed their licensing this year. And so the prosecutor's office has a feature that they use called redaction that's only available in the higher end version now, of course. And so it shifted our cost because of that a little bit, so that's why we bumped that up. The last item on this page is the Office three sixty-five licensing. So this is something we, this number's probably going to go down, but we need to kind of understand what it is, or how many additional staff members you guys are going to add, okay? And more specifically, what their roles are, okay? So, for example, a jailer or a dispatcher use E-one licenses because they have a shared computer and they just need email. Whereas a probation officer has a full-blown license that comes to the office and all that, it's a little bit more expensive. So if the, let's say we add twenty people next year, well, if ten of them are just shared workspaces and ten of them are unique workspaces, those prices will vary. And so we spent right at eighty-five thousand this year, so we were a little under budget this year with what we have numbers wise right now. So with their annual bump, four percent, I would probably not recommend going below ninety-five, given what you guys have already talked about as far as staff so far. But again, once you guys decide staffing for across the board, then we can get closer to an actual number once I know what you guys are looking at doing, if that makes sense.
Oh yeah, that makes perfect sense. I see what you're saying, I mean, it's not going to be a huge bump either direction from ninety-five to a hundred and ten once you got this.
Right, right.
But still, it's a number that we could stay at ninety-five, then a little.
Right.
Should we be just workstations these sessions?
Correct.
Shared workstations, it's kind of what we're talking, I mean, you and Dan, all of us that are kind of, we're talking about just the workstation use. I guess my question too is, thinking about like the Justice Center, can this be, whatever this additional portion be peeled out and pushed to the jail lit?
I mean, it could, certainly, I mean, we don't have, we don't have really any, well, I shouldn't say we don't have any. We do have software in the lit budget right now, so yeah, I mean, we could. It's just, it's more of a logistical challenge, I guess, structure, but.
It would be split now, numbers.
Right, exactly.
And I think that, and I think it's more of a Debbie Carr thing, like, hey, I'm trying to keep as much as we can in the general fund. And if it's a true Justice Center cost, put it in the jail lit.
Yeah, we can sort of look into see what that, what that.
You just break it out, just say, hey, here's what the estimated cost is. Okay, all right. Sorry, I don't remember if I called that Debbie Carr, whatever the additional cost for IT in the Justice Center, try to figure out if we could just allocate funds, see if we can peel something out and put it back into the jail lit. I'm sorry, is it the Justice Lit, whatever the jail lit is.
All right, going on to page six. So the Azure subscription, my Aaron's favorite topics. So we have a portion of this in software maintenance, we have a portion of this in hardware maintenance, which is basically our cloud credits for all of our data, okay? So, as you know, Aaron, we've been working towards getting a solution with the prosecutor's office to start deleting some of their older cases that are no longer required under statute to maintain that data. We ran into some issues with our cloud vendor getting that ironed out, we've now resolved those issues and are ready to go. Fortunately for Kent, which he's not probably listening.
He's on, he's listening.
So unfortunately, he's now at the end of the summer, and so he's losing his intern, so he's losing a little bit of his staff, unfortunately, obviously, with that. But we are going to be moving forward now with the ability to start deleting the older cases, which should alleviate those prices. What I would recommend is, so we have sixty, we have forty to sixty thousand in this budget, and we have forty to eighty thousand in the hardware maintenance. My recommendation is, let's take it from forty to fifty in this one, and forty to fifty in the hardware maintenance, and leave it there. And I think we'll be good for next year, once he starts deleting where we are right now with the budgetary numbers. And then hopefully, because it's obviously going to take him a while to process all that data, hopefully by next year, we'll have better understanding where we stand, and then next year, we can hopefully go down further. But I want to make sure, obviously, we have enough in there for next year to cover this.
So, just for some context, which I'll correct if I'm wrong, eighty percent of our storage, am I right on eighty percent? Eighty percent of our countywide storage, and this is not a knock, I was canceling it, eighty percent of the storage for the county is being consumed by the prosecutor's office, and that's because of body cam footage. So the property, it's a, I could go down a rabbit hole, but I tell you, it is costly, it's probably an understatement to say that it is. I mean, we're talking close to, you know, it can get up to the hundreds of thousands of dollars easily. And the prosecutor that I've met, he's educating the police departments as best as he can on an officer, you can get a traffic stop and have six officers show up, and every single one of those officers' body cam has to be archived, saved, no matter what. And when I tell you it is decimating our budget, it is, it is killing us. Like, we've talked about it ad nauseam, like, something different has to be done. So within that, we didn't have a retention policy for keeping, you know, files. And the prosecutor, we're going to talk about it in his workshop, but for like murder trials and some of our more hazardous crimes, you obviously have to have a longer retention policy, but for some other things, you don't. So what Sean is talking about now is like deleting things and putting something in place that would just alleviate the amount of stores that we had, that would reduce that number. But at the rate we're going, and if you just heard what the sheriff said, the departments are adding more officers. So the cost is going to go up. So when I tell you, like, in the coming years, this is going to be a major pain point for us, I mean, you could be looking at easily seven hundred and fifty thousand, a million dollars a year in storage costs.
And I'm sure you guys are all over this, but did you, did you and the prosecutor talk about what other counties are doing? What the retention policies, how many officers really need to show up to that traffic stop?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up.
I can't imagine there aren't some ways for us to put in policy some reduction strategies like you're describing that other counties have already done.
I don't know, we don't want to keep going down that rabbit hole.
Yeah.
But.
At a very high level, yes, there are other counties and other municipalities that have, one, retention policies that we're looking to implement. But then at the end of the day, when an officer shows up to a call, it's up to, you know, that's just tenant and captain to kind of educate them and ultimately achieve anything, all right, since the sheriff to say, hey, we got to do a better job. But yes, they're ongoing conversations.
Great.
Is Kent part of those conversations?
He's leaving.
Okay, good.
They're leaving, I've just, I have just been very adamant, something has to change, because I've seen the costs go up, and when I tell you it's climbing, it's climbing at an astronomical rate, so.
Thanks.
Nope, you're good. Keep yourself at it.
Okay, so the Azure subscription, again, I would recommend we change that from sixteen to fifteen thousand. The Azure GIS is, is a three-year contract, this is the third year of that contract, and it was a, for the contract to jump from forty to sixty thousand. The next four items are new items. The HVC management system, this is a system that the maintenance facilities team has been looking at for a while now to allow them to control all of their buildings. HVC, they can set up schedules to maybe run a little cooler in the evenings or a little warmer in the evenings, depending on the temperature outside, when there's people not here and so forth. I think with the number of buildings we have and whatnot, it's probably, it's going to end up paying for itself. But this would be a two thousand dollar annual maintenance contract that allows them to have access to that system. Facilities management system, kind of along the same lines. Currently, they don't have anything to keep track of their inventory, keep track of their maintenance items, you know, replacing different equipment throughout the various buildings. This allows them to create schedules, it also allows them to have a call logging system for work orders to come in from all the various offices. And this would give them licenses for all of their employees to run through. SMTP-to-go is an IT item. We've been running into issues over the last year or so with all of the automated emails that we have, public safety wise. Microsoft just started throttling the usage, and is, this solution, Dino, one of our guys came up with, is, it's basically unlimited usage, and we've been transitioning things over to that this year already. We actually found the money in this year's budget to pay for this, but it will be an ongoing cost of seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. But it'll actually save us a little bit of money, because the number of E-one licenses we were having to use is, we were having to use three different licenses to make it work, we can get those, it's a cost neutral position, basically. Highway point man GPS system, highway put this request in, it gives them the ability to track and locate utilities as roadwork is being done. I know this was an item we discussed kind of at length during our liaison meeting. I sent off, I asked the highway for additional information, which I sent off to all of you guys. Obviously, this is not an us request, so if you have any additional questions beyond what I, we already answered, Phil, Preo, and Zero, you can jump in, as Dino.
Is this currently in your budget?
So the point man request, we've got the initial cost that they paid for by the highway department in this year's budget. This is the ongoing cost for the future years, is my understanding, went through the IT budget.
So we still, we still have it staked out by the other organizations?
So the purpose of this is not to remove the requirement of calling eight-one-one and note before you dig or any of that, this would be for various uses, but one of the things I mentioned was locating utilities. So we have a fact truck, we get an exposure utility, and then we could go gather the point data from where that location is of that utility that's buried in the ground, in the right of way. So when we're doing any projects, pipe replacements, there's a major shortage of eight-one-one locators. Currently, it takes several days to get a locate, it's only active for eighteen days. We go to the site to do the excavation, and we can't, have to call another locate, wait an additional number of days to go do that same excavation. If we can get it located, we can now go expose it with the fact truck, which basically uses a pressure washer and vacuum to expose a hole where you can then find the utility. This service is what we would use to collect that data, to be able to say, that's exactly where that utility is located, and now we can determine if we can replace the pipe or a structure of any type in the right of way.
And we are getting new as-built data, data which.
Correct, so we are, this is, we will be able to store this data. When any new utility comes in and buries in the right of way, we are having them collect this data also. So when a new utility gets installed, we get an as-built, this is where the exact location is of this utility, whatever, this telecommunication line, and then we are able to store that information for future use on any of our projects.
I guess, thank you for that. So is this replacing call before you dig?
It can't replace that, because that's a state law. So all this does is give them the ability, when they're doing project planning and stuff like that, knowing where stuff is at, is where I see the big advantage is.
So when you call before you dig, they'll go mark something, and it'll be within two feet of a location. And that's required, that's the law, you have to do that before you actually excavate. Finding where that actually is and collecting that data, we're getting down to a point like this, much smaller, and we're able to store that data. So that's where this service comes in. That's something that we struggle with, I know surveyors offices always struggle with getting exactly where something is. Because when you start excavating the unknown, you have no idea what's down there.
So to the point of, we're not, we're not assuming any additional responsibility, any additional liability.
Yeah, that was, that was my concern, isn't it?
Yeah, my problem.
Okay, yeah.
I didn't want it out there, so somebody else takes and grabs it and says, yeah.
No, not even, no, not even that, I didn't want us to, I don't, they won't want to buy a work line. I didn't want us to puncture something inadvertently and hit a line, because it's, I don't know how that wire pressure works. I don't know the companies that do this, if you inadvertently hit a fiber line or something.
You've got to be careful what line you're doing.
Gas line.
A gas line? If we inadvertently hit something, I'm like, the cost of that.
Even if we have point man, even if we know exactly where it is, you still have to call and locate. That has no bearing on either one, I don't care if you know exactly where it's at and you can see it, you still have to call and locate before you use any excavation equipment or any of that.
As you understand, it's size that won't let you directly use even power, like you described, because it is something intelligent, like you're talking about.
Does the utility require the GPS that when they put it in?
Yes, so we are, that's our new requirements, the ordinance that got passed earlier this year included that they are to provide us this information when they're installing their utilities. This will allow us to store that information, so we can then use it in future.
And that's something the highway department's asked for for years, it's sometimes been hard to get it, you know.
We're finally getting, I think, the systems, I think, that are available, and the cost is coming down enough where we can do it. For years to collect the data, store the data, it's going to cost a significant amount, and that's what's always been cost prohibitive for us to do it. Now utilities are coming in at a very high pace, and our, and our right of ways getting filled up very quick, it's hard to do the maintenance work beyond major projects, so that's, this is where this will help significantly.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks.
Go, Sean.
All right, so that's it on software maintenance, so that total number would be five-five-nine-six-one-two.
If you didn't understand it, there's an echo back there.
I can turn it back.
What was it, five-five-nine-six?
Six-one. Next item is hardware maintenance, along the same lines. Switch router maintenance was a pretty significant increase this year. When we buy network equipment, we buy servers, things like that, we buy them with five-year maintenance contracts included in the original price. Eventually, those obviously fall off, we typically replace that hardware in the seventy-eight year range. And so this initial year, we had thirteen switches come off that we finished changing this contract, which is the reason for the increase. Copier contract, we bumped this up from eighty to a hundred thousand based off of the usage and the fact that we'll be adding six additional copiers for the Justice Center. The server maintenance, kind of same thing. We had two of our six hosting servers, and then both of our storage servers come off their initial maintenance contracts. You know, I know that looks like a lot, which it is, obviously, it's forty-four thousand dollars, but when you take into consideration that each one of those storage servers is almost half a thousand dollars, that's why it's so much.
Yeah.
So, you know, the longer we can obviously wait to replace it, the better.
What's an alternative to the?
I don't know, yeah, I mean, there's, not every application can be cloud-based, obviously, so.
I opened a little door. You hit that.
Well, I mean, you're the.
How many of our applications are cloud-based that are sitting on, that's, I mean, are we looking at that as an option?
Well, for starters, we also have to keep in consideration, we've got probably eighty percent of our overall data in the cloud. Okay, so it's not like we have everything here, that's not the case. I would say the vast majority of the, especially the non-critical things are already in the cloud. Online backup credit, kind of something we discussed before, so instead of doing eighty thousand, I would recommend we do fifty, with the hope, obviously, that the, after the deletion, that we'll be able to lessen that next year.
That was new, probably two decades, that reduction, fifty to eighty, that.
That was on my back.
Yeah.
On my back.
So that would be three hundred and thirty-two thousand.
They only lasted right, Sean? Do you want to jump in the auditor's office?
I was standing there.
There's a lot of fun in there.
All right, CCD. So annual PC purchase, this number fluctuates every year, obviously, based off of what it's replaced. We have it split already between the sheriff's office lit and the IT budget, which is everybody else. The IT portion this year is a hundred thousand. The, we do have two physical servers.
I'm sorry, on the hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
Going back to, is there anything? What is the split of PS lit?
That, that hundred thousand is just.
This is just CCD alone, right?
Yes, PS lit is.
So when you say annual purchase of a hundred thousand dollars, a running rate of a hundred thousand dollars purchasing hardware, oh, I'm sorry, purchasing PCs, right?
The desktops and laptops, yes.
And how many employees do we have not including the sheriff's office?
Not including the sheriff's office.
Probably right at two hundred, they have about a hundred, and right now we have a hundred. Yeah.
Can employees opt out of, like this, getting their computer updated every four years?
Should they opt out?
Wait, I'm thinking of like mine. I don't, I don't know when my next four years, I don't, I'm not going to need another one. And that, or are we looking at them every four years to see if all of them need to be updated or replaced? I mean, I am the last person on here who knows anything about, like, technology, but.
No, what I'm, she's bringing up the point, because I'm like, if you, if you have an annual run rate of a hundred thousand dollars for annual PC purchases, right, strip out the sheriff's department, and I'm like, we're essentially spending five hundred dollars a year on PC equipment on average, we're employing. Like, I'm sitting here trying to be like, like, that's a lot of money, and I'm trying to figure out like.
It is, but the problem, well, the problem's twofold. A significant portion of the county is now running on laptops. Okay, so the laptops run right at, right at three grand for the full setup. The other part of this issue is the Odyssey computers, which is the state court system.
Yeah.
So when we, when.
How many of our employees are using that? I mean, yeah, what, what.
Prohibition, prosecutor access, clerk, all courts, so a significant portion of the, the user community. The problem is, is that Odyssey requires a high-end workstation, basically, to run the software. We, when we, for the longest time forward with Odyssey, we were averaging around, for a basic computer for a normal user, around eight hundred bucks. Now it's like two thousand because of Odyssey, which again, we have no control of the state court system. The, maybe those are the two main reasons, I guess, is the change, the shift to the laptops.
I get that, I just go back to, we're spending five hundred dollars a year per employee. The highway department is probably our second largest department after the sheriff's, maybe, maybe I'm wrong on that. And then I just, I just go back to it, just a basic Google search, if I, if we don't use these, if I bought a MacBook, which has the normal five to six-year life cycle on it, we're using PCs, so you can take off, you know, two years on that, and then a certain number of our employees probably using desktops and not using laptops. Like, five hundred dollars a year, you're doing better than what we're doing in the corporate sector on cost per device for, you know, employee. So on the two-year, I'm sorry, four-year run rate, we're spending two thousand dollars, and it's just kind of like, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot.
I don't disagree, but we also have a, we also see a significant failure rate going beyond, we actually used to be on a three-year one, we went to four. And we've seen a significant increase from three to four years as far as failure of hardware. The other issues you run into is performance, as applications obviously evolve, their resource requirements will go up. And so, you know, we are concerned if your suggestion is going to a five-year rotation of the failure rate about the performance hit for the employees as far as efficiencies are concerned.
Or is it possible to like, like, again, like, I can say, like, hey, I don't think I need a new one, and you guys, I don't know if there's a way to look at it and determine if it.
Okay, first, it wasn't, it wasn't IT's choice to give the council laptops, that was requested from commissioners, okay? So if the council decides that you guys don't want your laptops, that's fine, it doesn't matter to us. But I mean, you guys are kind of the exception to the rule, I mean, because, I mean, everybody else works, obviously, full-time and has a dedicated computer. So, I mean, I would be surprised, I guess, if I found any employees that says, hey, I don't want a master computer.
All right, so let me ask in a different way too. I'm not saying like I don't want it, I'm just saying, could someone look at it and be like, oh no, she wrote, this could go another year. But don't some offices have, like, take-home laptops, so they're using a desktop when they're here?
No, no.
Oh, I thought.
We've moved away from doing that, so if, if we replace a desktop with a laptop, that's the only machine that they now have.
Okay, so there aren't extras anywhere?
They use it in their offices.
No floaters?
We've done away with that, but we've done away with all that.
Okay.
She's asking basically the refresh rate, like, hey, what would you all consider your refresh rate, is that what you're saying?
Is that a legal term?
Oh, God, no. Because normally you refresh a laptop at a certain interval.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
It's also an unfair comparison to compare a home computer to a work computer, because you have so many more applications that you use constantly. Because you have so many more applications that you use constantly. Uh, and so the needs are different. You're not just browsing the internet all day long, okay? And so, uh, the other factor here is that we do four-year maintenance contracts as with the purchase. And so if you go to a fifth year, either you have to pay more for maintenance to get a fifth year if that's been early to do it. Or you have to understand that you're gonna have to have some bears on the shelf because you're gonna have a higher failure percentage of that fifth year. And then you're, then just cracking snowballs.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, if we were to deduct a hundred thousand, we're gonna have to increase the, the hardware, you know, replacement costs because we do have failure rates. Now, one thing we don't replace are monitors and those types of things.
Okay.
When we're talking about the PC, it is just the PC. So as long as there are keyboard, mouse and monitor working, we don't replace them, we don't replace them.
Are there any grants that we can get from the state for the Odyssey computers?
So there was an initials grant and that first year they did provide computers for all of the judges, court staff and the clerk's office. They did not for the prosecution probation.
Okay.
But that was that one time hit and then four years later, when it was, when they were due to be replaced.
They didn't do.
They didn't provide anything.
Okay. Sorry.
I would just say on this, that, um, kind of like cell phones and other technology, it's always gotten better over time. I would love to explore something other than a Surface Pro unless you all have some kind of agreement with Microsoft or with your parent business. Technologies get, just gets better over time and a Surface Pro is probably runs about a thousand dollars to buy one, at least from my last calculations. Not, you know, the other things. But at a run rate of five hundred dollars per employee is what I think my calculations come up to. And you're saying it's a couple thousand dollars with the Joe rate. We should replace them every couple of years, desktops, you know, so just thinking about that.
Yep, we can look into it further. Second item here is replacement of two physical domain controllers. We do have two servers that, uh, one for the sheriff's office side, one for the courthouse side. That handle all of our authentication, basically is what they do. And, uh, this would be a cost to replace those two units, they're eight years old. Uh, panic button system, so kind of going back to some previous comments, uh, regarding courthouse security. We, we also were approached by various offices, uh, regarding enhanced, uh, options for security. The courthouse currently has a panic button system, uh, called a Varda system.
Okay.
The system can do a lot more than what it does currently. Uh, and so, uh, at, at the request of the sheriff, we met with, uh, this company and his team and kind of went through what all it can do, okay? And so this system can support, uh, gun detection sensors, it can support, uh, uh, PA systems and strobe lights. It also has a software component to where we can turn every computer in the environment into a panic button. So instead of having, as both, as you know, most of the officers are bullpens basically. Well, there's one panic button in that world that you have to be able to try to figure out how to get to in the event of, of something going on. With this software, you would, each employee would have the ability to trigger a panic alarm from their computer. The other side to that is that it's intelligent in that they can also then receive panic alarms. So if a panic button, for example, was triggered in the clerk's office, we could set it up to where it not only notifies dispatch and every, and the road deputies through the radio system automatically, but it can then automatically notify all of the employees in all of the other offices in that building that, hey, a panic alarm was just triggered in the courthouse, you know, room, whatever, substance of person. We can make it that great. Dispatch also then has the ability to trigger alarms if they choose to. Uh, and so there's a lot of flexibility with this. The, the total cost to deploy everything we just discussed is a hundred and seventy thousand. It's a one-time cost. There is no increase to ongoing annual maintenance. The other side to this is, is at the request of the sheriff, I worked with one of his guys. And we have submitted a grant proposal to the state, uh, I'm sorry, to Homeland Security that we are hopeful will actually cover a hundred and fifty thousand of the hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Now, unfortunately, we don't know that yet, but we should hopefully find out sometime in October.
No, I appreciate it. I was chatting with Jennifer about security and safety for some of our other elected officials. I talked, when Dan and I were doing our days on work, we talked about this kind of at length. I'm super supportive of this because I think the safety and security of our staff is just, should be a top priority. Uh, but just know that that grant doesn't go through, there's a significant amount of money to, to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, well, about four hundred and seventy thousand that we'll need. So I'm talking with Dan potentially, I think, is this something that could be paid on the CCD?
Just having it CCD.
Is that what's that?
That's what's that.
That's what's that, alright. But just know that if that doesn't go through the full amount.
And I, I would, I mean, this is something that as a courthouse employee in the clerk's office could probably attest to this. Lately it's been a little sketchy in our offices. We've had a few people that have come in that we've had to call security for and it, you know, it, no fault of their own, they're upset, it, it is what it is. But it's still, if we, if we had it more accessible to us to be able just to push a button instead of trying to run around a, a desk, trying to figure out where a little white button is, then, you know, it, it would ease a lot of our minds, I think.
This current system's twenty-five years old.
Yeah, I agree with you, sure.
And they don't, and they don't want?
Yeah.
And we only have like five of them, right?
No, no, there's, there's, there's one in every office, uh, and then there's some others, like, I think there's one in her courtroom as well.
We have a couple of them.
There's, there's, yeah, there's probably fifty or sixty of them total.
Okay.
But when you only have, you know, six deputies in the whole courthouse, you've got court or trial going on, it's very limited. They can't leave the scanner. So if you've only got two.
Well, like the highway has nothing.
Yeah, right.
The probation has one up front, but what if something's going on in somebody's office? Cause they're all in offices right now. And then prosecutors also have a problem. Both those buildings are somewhat secure and that they, you can't just walk into them, but still, there's still lines in there.
Yeah. And the other thing that we talked about, this is a one-time cost. I thought there would be a license associated with this every year, but there isn't, which is shocking.
I agree, but, yeah, the, and a big chunk, a big portion.
Yeah, there's not, yeah, I was shocked. I was like, this has to have a license.
So it'll be put on, sorry, like every employee's computer too. So like, we'll have it on our laptops as well.
Is there different levels of this though? If you got somebody just upset about paying the property tax, is that gonna be?
They'd be pretty darn upset, y'all.
I think you told me there was a train bit.
In other words, is they gonna call the whole county? You gonna have six or seven deputies and the city police and whoever's supply is?
I think that's where Sean and I work together to figure that out. I don't know that it shouldn't. More than likely that the courthouse deputies are gonna deal with it. They make sure that it, it's sustained or not sustained and know how big an incident it is. But continue to let those people respond and we can cut them off if they're not needed.
Sometimes it's just the presence of a brown uniform when they walk in the office that they settle down, change their tune and, and walk, and walk out. I mean, and, and, you know, just takes brown uniform, it probably just doesn't get them back to that.
Same thing with the meetings here and that.
Yeah.
And it's like courthouse.
If, um, I'm gonna just pick on Tony for a minute. Tony brings his computer home with this on it and someone tries to attack him at his home. Can he use, can he use that at home?
He can hit the button, yes, and it would trigger, but it will trigger with, with whatever their location is in the system. It's not GPS located. Now, having said that, the Varda system does have mobile units, I believe Sean has one.
Don't, don't talk about it.
But, sorry.
But it would, would it give us the ability to have more mobile ones?
Yes, we could add more if we chose to, yes.
Okay.
But we're looking at the technology too because our Vardas that are out there, right?
Yeah.
They need to be updated as well and not trying to, Jason Rales is looking to fork out in order to try to ascertain a few more of those Vardas so that we can deploy them if they're needed. They're, they're out all the time.
Yeah.
The public too.
Okay.
Right, we're about where the whole county that have, right?
Yeah.
Just families don't have them, so they, they can go anywhere. Okay? It does help.
Yeah.
Soon or not, October?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm assuming that we'll let you guys know. Uh, last item, CCD is the diesel engine diagnostic system of the highway department as well. Gives them the ability to, uh, diagnose their equipment basically and determine if it's something to fix or if it's for not. Page nine, uh, this is just kind of a, this is the DNF system that's currently in CCD software. There's no increased.
What is the contract up for this? I didn't know you were looking into that.
I'm pretty sure it's up now, I think.
This is the last year.
Yeah, I think it ends at the end of this year.
It does, yeah. At least the last payment's this year.
Yeah, so is this a renewal? Cause this is, we're paying for this for next, this is a eighty-five thousand dollar amount for next year. So if it's up this year, where is this?
That's how much it is here.
That's how much, well, it's gone up. The first year was fifty, I was fifty, fifty-five, maybe sixty-five. And then it was sixty or sixty-five and then the last year was more expensive. Uh, I will, I will follow up.
First, the first one was a three-year, I think, right?
Yeah.
Three-year contract.
This is one that we'll have to decide whether we're going, you know, go forward with.
Okay, alright. Uh, and then the last page, page ten, it is kind of the PS Lit. We already talked obviously about the first item. The CAD licensing increase is based off of the expansion of the, of the dispatch center. Obviously we'll have to put additional stations, so we'll put a lot of additional licenses. Uh, net motion.
But you have that in PS Lit. Can we not put that in jail Lit?
I guess, I don't know if that's.
I don't know, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Can we not put this in jail? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's a discussion you could have. Yes, it would fit in there, but you may have to move something out.
Well, Kida, my choose, this is not a one-time cost.
That's what I'm saying. I, I know that, that's why I'm saying, because it is ongoing and everything else that comes out of PS Lit out of budget, especially from an operating standpoint. Can we just look at it without making decisions?
We're getting sustained and I'm not opposed to it. I mean, but I agree with you. I think we look at it.
Okay. Same with that motion?
Uh, that motion, yeah, just additional licenses. Again, it also kind of depends to a certain extent on how many additional staff, what those staff roles are and so forth. And then obviously the PC purchase. The reason for the big bump for them is the, is the, when we did the original PS Lit, you guys brought on like fifteen people all at one time or something like that. And so this is like the heavy year, if you will, of, of laptop replacements, because those were all bought in that, that year. So that's why some of the years is lower, some of the years is higher. Those are the right ones. Correct, which are even more expensive.
The one, they put in the cars.
Yes. So, that's all I had.
Alright, if you would just give us that information. Daddy, do you want us to vote on any of these? But because they're getting me up.
Um, I think we can do some of the motions.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go back a minute after. County General, was it, was it seven, five, three?
Would you confirm that nine oh three one total, Sean?
Nine oh three one should be five, five, nine, six, one, zero.
Hardware maintenance, you discussed?
That's three, three, two, zero, zero, zero.
Are there any, did we make any adjustments to anything under the county general?
Just a favor, how about the fifty thou?
Oh.
The other one doesn't make, I think that one.
That's what I said, it went down.
It went down eighty-eight hundred?
Yeah. And then contract is what you requested, right?
I think you'll wanna make, if you're making a motion, you'll make a motion for the changes on the two ones. Nine oh three one and nine oh three two.
What would nine oh three one be?
Nine oh three one is gonna be five, five, nine, six, one, zero.
Five, five, nine.
Six, one, zero. Nine oh three two is three, three, two, zero, zero, zero.
Do we have a motion for two, one?
Is there a third?
Not a change.
But I make a motion to approve nine zero three one, an amount of five, five, nine, six, one, zero. And nine zero three two, an amount of three, three, two, zero, zero, zero.
Is there a second?
And the rest is submitted.
And the rest is submitted.
There's like four.
And, okay, and the rest is submitted.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably within the second. Is there any further discussion? If not, always, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you.
Which one?
Eleven thirty-eight.
Are we ready for it? The only thing, we've got a couple things that Sean is gonna check on and we also.
We can come back to this one?
Yeah. But the D will go there too, so let's, let's check on those.
PS Lit, should we wait on that too?
Can we wait on PS Lit and see if we can move it to jail Lit? Is that worth it?
Tell me.
PS Lit?
We're gonna wait on PS Lit and see if Jack can move it to jail Lit.
I see how that looks out. Is that it? That's it, for now.
For now.
I'll go for it.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I do want to take time, I mean, obviously to save that money earlier today for us, but he's very, been very instrumental in the new project. And the server and everything, getting everything ramped up to go. I know I'm his backup guy on IT when he. He does deserve a lot of credit because he, he has been involved in making sure that we got the right things out of operation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Before or after your dispatch?
Tony fixed my laptop! We'll break for lunch and be back.
Let me see if lunch is here.
The storage cones for the body cameras?